Board of Commission. Okay, item nine B, presentation of Portales Fire Department.
A.
A.
Nine A.
Mr. Kathy. Fire Chief Kathy.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. So as a negotiator for the city of Portales, we just thought that we kind of missed the mark with dispatch when we weren't able to actually have a presentation for you guys. So that you guys get, everybody gets the information that we see in negotiations. So you know, it's just, it's just the presentation from Fire Chief Kathy that we're going to present today. So we appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'd also like to thank retired Chief Knuckles and Chiefs Lang, Luskum, and Bilbury from Dora, Alida, or not Alida, Millen Sand and Arch that may be able to answer some questions that I'm not able to if it pertains to their departments. If at any point you have any questions, feel free to stop me or statements and we'll be glad to go over those. Moving on to the second slide, our community is extremely blessed to have such high quality services provided by volunteer and paid departments alike to our community. We have two county volunteer departments, Arch and Millen Sand, four municipal volunteer departments, Floyd, Alida, Dora, and Kazi, and then Portales Fire is the one full-time paid municipal department. Going on to the next slide, it shows that we have 24 operations personnel with three shifts of eight. Each shift has a battalion chief, a lieutenant, a second lieutenant, and five firefighters. And then for administration staff, you have myself, Patty, there's our EMS billing specialist, and now a no longer part-time, a full-time EMS billing clerk. Moving on to the next slide, we have seven paramedics, seven intermediates, four EMT basics, and 12 personnel currently enrolled in EMS classes. Five in paramedic, three in AEMT or intermediate, and four in EMT basic. Moving on to the next slide, we look at our fire certifications. We have nine personnel with no certifications, 16 personnel with firefighter one and two, three driver operators, three hazmat technicians, five with fire instructor, five with fire officer one, two with fire officer two, and one with fire officer three. Moving on to the next slide, it talks about our training hours. New hires go through approximately 350 hours of new hire orientation training, as well as our annual ISO and EMS recertification training of 336 hours. An EMT basic course is 150 hours. It's a full semester long, as well as intermediate. That's also a full semester long. And then the paramedic course is the big one, right at 1,600 hours of training. So if we take a new hire with no experience, no certifications through EMT basic, fire one and two, and intermediate, they have about 1,710 total hours of training. Then if we extend past that with annual training, driver operator and paramedic, they've got 4,170 hours of total training. Now, if grants aren't available, if scholarships are not available, it costs us about $5,000 to send one person to EMT basic class. It costs about $11,000 to send one person to intermediate, and it costs about $50,000 to send somebody to paramedic. Moving on to the next slide, we'll talk about the apparatus we have. We have four type one ambulances, two Class A type one engines, one of which is a rescue engine, two Class A type four engines, three brush trucks, two tenders, and one aerial apparatus. Going on to the next slide, we're going to look at our run volume for last fiscal year based on the actual calls for service from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. We had 3,489 total calls for service, 87.4% were EMS, and 12.6% were fire. 80.4% originated inside the city limits and 19.6% originated outside the city limits. Moving on to the next slide, we're going to look at our total funding for last fiscal year. Our total operating budget was just under 4.1 million. That includes fire fund from the state fire marshal's office, which attributed 9.9% of our total operating budget, EMS fund act from the Department of Health through the state, which was 0.4% of our budget, then our city-funded budget at just under 2.8 million at 68.4% of our total operating budget. And then that's supported by our EMS billing revenue, which our billing specialists do an amazing job, and that covered 20.4% of our total operating budget. County reimbursements for services at 0.7% of our total operating budget, and then wildland reimbursements for grass fires was 0.2% of our total operating budget. Going on to the next slide, the total cost to provide service. If you take our total operating budget divided by the number of calls that we had during that budget that fiscal year, it cost $1,170.19 for every call. EMS billing covered a little under $240 of every call. Fire fund, a little over $115 of every call. EMS fund, $4.30 of every call. Wildland reimbursement, just under $2 a call. Roosevelt County reimbursement for services, just under $9 per call. And City of Portales covered $868, $868 for each call. So if we move on to the next slide, we can take our city-funded budget, so taking out the grant funding, state fire marshal funds, EMS billing, and looking at what it costs the City of Portales to provide services, take our little less than 2.8 million, subtract what we made in EMS billing revenue, and that gives us a remaining cost of just under 2 million. Then apply the percentages of run volume from city to county. It costs the City of Portales a little over, a little less than 1.6 million to provide services inside the city limits, and then a little less than 384,000 to provide services outside the municipality of the City of Portales. Moving on to the next slide, some of our drastic needs. We need to add personnel so that we can increase our response capability so that our personnel are safer and the community safer. We need to add a fifth type one ambulance. We haven't increased the number of ambulances we've had since 1989, from what I can see in our data. And we've seen a 200% increase in run volume since that timeframe. So not only we need to increase personnel, we needed a fifth ambulance, and it would be nice that if it was four-wheel drive. We need to update our cardiac monitors. We need a new fully-equipped rescue engine. Our current one's 20 years old, and the extrication equipment on it is also 20 years old, and with the updates in current vehicles, we may have a hard time extricating victims if we don't receive that funding for the extra, the extrication equipment. And then we need to improve pay to retain and recruit our, well, retain our highly-trained personnel that we pay for and recruit trained personnel. If we move on to the next slide, it's an excerpt from the New Mexico County Commission handbook. "Under the power granted to counties to protect the general welfare of its citizens, fire protection and emergency medical services are a function of the county." Moving on to the next slide, NMSA 4-36-5 says, "Counties may contract with municipalities for the purchase of firefighting services when certain services are needed. When in the opinion of the Board of County Commissioners, such services may be more economically provided by such contracts than maintaining firefighter firefighting services by the county. With that, the contract price shall be based upon the cost of services, depreciation of the equipment, and the cost of insurance necessary or desirable to protect the municipality while engaged in extraterritorial firefighting under a contract with the county." Moving on to the next statute that pertains to EMS. It's New Mexico Statute, Chapter 5, Article 1, Section 5-1-1. "A municipality or county may provide ambulance services or contract with other political subdivisions or with private ambulance services for the operations of its ambulance service." So with that, I would ask if you have any questions for the volunteers before I round out my time.
I have no question.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nice presentation.
I'd like to request if the firefighter volunteers from the county have any input in lieu of us asking you guys questions. Do y'all have any input to just kind of educate us more on everything that's going on? No?
Are you asking, these gentlemen, these gentlemen here are county fire. I'm municipal.
Right, yes.
Are you asking all three of us, or are you asking?
Well, I'm just, I'm just, feedback, any feedback is good feedback to me. The more I'm educated in this whole thing, the better. Even what you presented, thank you so much for being here. It educated me a lot. I mean, I had never seen the statutes ordinances, and I don't mean to be naive or ignorant to the whole thing, but thank you for being here. So I would just, just any additional feedback.
The issues that we're running into are the same issues that Chief Kathy's running into, and that's retention, recruitment. Volunteer services are dying. We're less than 10 years away from there not being any volunteer services in Roosevelt County at this point.
Commissioner Dixon, do you want to mention what we were going to advocate for with the whole certification process? Remember, we talked about this a few years ago.
I think a lot of the issues are, and I'm thinking Chief Kathy would agree with me, a lot of the issues are with the volunteer fire departments are the schooling, the education, the fact that you have to go through all of the training hours. You have to go through all of that just to be a volunteer, which makes it incredibly hard because as volunteers, we all have other jobs. So then you're having to keep up with all of those hours, and you just can't. It's a financial burden. It's a burden on the volunteer fire department, as I am sure it is on the paid fire departments as well. Is that what you're talking about, Dennis?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
I think that that's probably going to be a problem with everybody.
Well, this gentleman just said within 10 years, we may, it may be obsolete. We may not have. So we need more incentives, not more things that are detrimental to promoting individuals who are willing to volunteer. And that's, I think we need to advocate that on a statewide process, and we can talk to the higher-level people at a later time, possibly even today on our agenda, item G.
Okay, I agree with you. And are you finished? Are you wanting me to ask you questions yet?
You can ask me questions at any time. I do have one more slide to cover.
If you want to go ahead and do it, go ahead.
Okay. So there's been a lot of talk in this meeting about investments, and I understand that's a huge part of what a governing body does. But of course, me as the fire chief, I believe there's no better investment than into the safety of our public. That being said, I understand that the Board of County Commissioners has the right to choose the fire and EMS services provided between municipal boundaries, but would like to respectfully request that the commission consider entering into agreement with the City of Portales Fire Department to provide such services that may be more economically provided by such contracts than maintaining services by the county within E911 Response Zone 461, our most populated zone, and appropriate agreements with our volunteer departments throughout our community that provide such great services. The services we provide are, in my opinion, undeniably important and necessity. So I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Tina, before you, before you speak, if you don't mind, TJ is very passionate about his department. By no means are we here, you know, to talk numbers or anything. He just knows that his department has a very high service to be able to service the county residents, and he's very proud of that, as are we, and as are you guys. I mean, when you use his service, you know that you're going to get the greatest service that you possibly can. If you have to, you know, there's something, if you have to do an ambulance service, it's going to be costly. We've looked into prioritizing, prioritizing our ambulance service, and it is, it would cost about 1.2 million, a little over 1.2 million dollars to get that done, when we have the personnel in place to get it done. Another thing is that I just wanted to mention was our ISO rating with servicing the county. That makes our ISO rating higher, which helps with insurance premiums. And if, you know, something happens to where we just do the city lines, city limits, then TJ, can you kind of talk on that?
So we as first responders don't get to determine where we respond, our district. We can make a recommendation on what we feel is best, and we can look at the history of the service to see what is the best mechanism for that service. But according to New Mexico statutes, that falls on the governing body for that service. So for us, that falls on the City of Portales. For Russell and Jay, that's y'all. For Paul, that's the Village of Dora, and so on. So if an agreement can't be made between the two entities, because it's, it's really up to the Board of County Commission to determine what services you want provided your constituents. And if the agreement can't be made and we're not the ones that you select to provide that service, then the city council may choose to pull back to the city limits. In that event, depending on how ISO views who's taking over that area, that could make residents and businesses outside the municipality of Portales within E911 Response Zone 461 an automatic 10 to where it's very difficult, if not impossible, to obtain insurance. Is that what you wanted me to say, ma'am?
So I'm going to throw this out, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So if somebody was to have any type of injury where they needed y'all's services, like at Red Wine Estates, which is right there at city limits, they would have to call on Floyd to come from Floyd?
Well, that's going to be up to the fiscal agent for Floyd Fire Department to determine where they.
So would y'all feel comfortable?
Well, we as first responders don't feel comfortable. Somebody needs help, we're going to go help. It's not up to us.
Okay.
It's up to the governing bodies.
Okay, wait.
All the information out there, just so you guys know what could possibly happen.
My hope is that an agreement can be made so that we can continue providing a high-quality service to all the community, and we can continue working together to protect our community.
Okay, I have something to say.
Yes, ma'am.
On all of it. I appreciate your, your presentation. I think you did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
I am super happy that all of the volunteer fire departments are here. I think that's great. Just to let everybody know, I am on Alida, firing EMS, so I am a volunteer over there. But with what all you're saying, I understand all of this, but I want to first say that what we're doing is with the county money. This is not our personal pocketbook. This is with the taxpayer dollars. When we do things with the taxpayer dollars, we have to look at the whole picture. We also had to go through the dispatch services, which we did. We do several things that we do together that we have to work through. Sometimes you have to do a little more here for a little more there because it's all about the taxpayers at the end of the day, whether you're in the city of Portales, the town of Alida, Floyd, Dora, or in Roosevelt County. It's all about the taxpayers. It's all about the people. So yes, we do care about the people, but I think a lot of times this has been construed as that the Roosevelt County doesn't care about the people because we want to cut the lines back. When that's not true, we don't want to do that. We do want to, but you know what? We also care about the people and we're worried about detention. When we did this fight with detention, because you know what? We have a mental health problem all over the world. We have it right here in Roosevelt County. And when we were worried about detention, and we're trying to figure out how to do that, everybody's throwing out statutes and this and that, and it's going to depend on how you read it. But again, it's just like this. At the end of the day, it's about the people. When you know what? There wasn't a whole lot of consideration taken when we were going through that. And I know that I think I have a very good rapport with the majority of the people on the city council. On a personal basis, I get along with everybody on there. I get along well with you. I don't, this is not about a personal thing. This is about taxpayer dollars. And when we want to go into that, we can get along. We have discussed this as a Board of Commissioners in open meeting every single time. We have offered out several things. We, the four of us, which was Commissioner Criswell, myself, Councilwoman and Councilman Heflin, we all sat down. We've come up with several things. What the city council knows, I don't know, because we've never received anything in writing back. You've never discussed it in open meeting. It's never been discussed out there in open meeting of what your plans were with any of the ideas that we've sent forward. We have discussed them in open meeting every time I've come back with one. We have done that.
So the last council meeting that we had, I did bring that up in public comment. I guess I was just under the understanding that when we sent those, those figures back and y'all were meeting, it was just kind of like a stencil because we hadn't scheduled another meeting. But you are absolutely correct. It is all about people, and that's why I'm here. It's because, you know, we need to take care of everybody. We are all Roosevelt County. Portales is in Roosevelt County.
It is.
We are all one. So, you know, you and I have said that over and over in our meetings.
We have.
You know, I'm, I'm proud to say that, just like you're proud to say that. But we do, you know, we do need to move forward. I, this, this presentation was not meant for.
And it's not, and I'm glad that we're doing it, but the thing is, is if we want to look at all of this, and there's other information. So when you're talking about EMS runs, okay? So because it's outside of the city limits of Portales, but you know what? For example, at the hospital or the detention center or whatever, we have indigent funds that we can cover people that were in the detention center at a certain time or whatever that had to go to the hospital with indigent funds. That would be something that we could look into for these ones that are not being paid, that are not, but.
I do believe, and the billing specialist can answer that better, I do believe that she does work with the county to get those paid.
Okay.
Based on what the PRC tariff allows us to charge.
But at the same time, how many of these people that you're picking up, if it's an accident on the highway, that are even Roosevelt County residents? I mean, are they Roosevelt County residents? Is it up to Roosevelt County to pay for other things, just like the city of? Is that somebody's just driving through?
As I said before, both statutes say may.
They say may.
To say that you have to.
Right, none of that.
I'm not trying to cast doubt or say that y'all have done anything wrong. I'm just up here to advocate for our department and the volunteers department and the high-quality services that we've always provided. We're here, we're ready. We want to be who you choose to provide that service. I've been asked many times, well, what's your number? I'm not authorized to negotiate. But me as the fire chief, I'm not caught up on a number of what the negotiators need to get to.
Right.
But there's no agreement in place. I can't find an agreement between Roosevelt County and the City of Portales for firing EMS. So that casts a little doubt on whether or not we have the authority without an agreement to respond outside the city limits. Now, we want to be that go-to agency. We're high-quality. We do a great job. But that's going to be up to the agreement that y'all put in place.
And I agree, but I also think that it's important that if we're going to do an agreement with you being a paid, we have every one of these volunteer fire departments that I think are just as important. And I mean, they all go out there. They, you know, they're at everything. So, and I have a, I just know that we all have our area, and we all get on this because that's what we want to do. We have a heart for this. And if it's going to come down to the dollar signs with the city council saying, okay, well, we're not going to go outside the city limits, that's on the city of Portales.
The city council has never said that, and I want to be very clear.
It was just, we're just giving you scenarios.
But it could happen anywhere. The town of Alida, the village of Floyd, any of them can say, nope, we're not going outside of here. We all have that.
Yes.
We, anybody can do that. It's your ISO rating or your PRC or whatever you want to do, and you can do that. But I don't think that we need to just keep going back and forth and fighting over everything. When we did this with detention over and over and over, you know what? There wasn't a whole lot of give there.
And that was what my goal was here, was for TJ to actually present so that you would know, and then request that maybe your detention department head could come to us and report, you know, do a presentation to us so that we're all on the same page, and we all know what, you know, what we're paying for, what we're footing for. It's not about the dollar signs.
I've got something to say. So I was born and raised here with the exception, when I went off to college. What's broken that needs to be fixed? The fact that the city's broke? Is that what it is? That all this is surfacing all of a sudden? Because I grew up, born and raised, all through the 70s, 80s, you know, up until I left college. And everything's worked out right where we kind of take care of each other as one community. And all of a sudden now, we're having this little battle between, it all boils down to monies.
So it's not a battle. So we do have to have, and Amber can attest to this, we have to have a contractor, a JPA in place for both of us legally. I mean, Amber needs that. The city needs that. It's just to protect both entities. We're just wanting to get, because, I mean, you know, you stepped down from the negotiations because it wasn't going anywhere. We just need to move forward instead of moving backwards. And it's not about fighting. We're not here to fight. We're just here to give you information. That's all we wanted to do. Plus, we want information from your entity from detention. You know, we want you guys to schedule on our agenda so that you can come and present to us.
That would be great. And so on the billing that you give on that 300 and something dollars? So, and I guess you would be the one to ask, so on those particular runs that were in the county, how many of those did you receive any kind of payment for?
Well, it depends on what their insurance was, whether they're Medicaid or Medicaid.
Right.
Medicaid, private insurance. We would build their insurance. They would of course have.
Right.
A deductible that was due. There's no telling what, what they're going to actually reimburse us. But for most of the county residents that we run on, they are Medicare patients, and we do get reimbursed on those.
Okay, so I don't see, I mean, so to me, that would be double billing. If Medicare's already paid, then why would we pay again?
You go to the next slide, Amber. So what, an ALS level two for PRC, what they say we can bill is how much?
For an ALS two?
Yeah, the most expensive.
That would be 900 and 78 dollars.
Okay, so that's roughly $200 that it costs more than we are allowed to bill. And then Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements only cover so much, a percentage. It costs more to provide the service than we, than we earn. There's, this is a true service, not a business. There's no way we'll ever make enough money to pay for our existence.
Right, but I'm saying, just if they have that insurance and that's what covers, if that's what covers, there's, that's what's, that's what they're going to get at the doctor's office. So why are we then wanting to pay for a bill that's already been paid, regardless?
A lot of our patients are private paid. They do not have Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance. A lot of our patients are private paid.
Well, there's a, there's a three-month retroactive, and with the universal health coverage, why are you guys not referring them to the appropriate individuals that?
They have to have the want to go down and apply for.
Well, send them to me. I'm serious. Send them to me. That's the whole purpose for the universal health coverage. No one should be uninsured right now. Wow.
I would just like to see the bills that are for Roosevelt County that were not paid, not paid by insurance, not paid by something.
We don't have the staff to tabulate that. That would require two more full-time people on top of.
It would actually give us a more level playing field to know what the bill really should be.
But the just desserts would be it.
And the way it's calculated on the percentages, both entities see the benefits of insurance billing on both sides. Because we take out what we made in EMS billing revenue, and these ladies do an amazing job. They're above 90% collections, which is 30% above most collections agencies for EMS billing. So y'all see the benefit of that as the city in the calculation. I'm not asking for a number. I'm just trying to communicate the data that came from last fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, real quick, my recommendation, because there's, all of us have so much on our plates, my recommendation would be to maybe set up form between y'all's entity and our entity to get the details and specifics, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, like you mentioned. I'd like to see numbers, not just data. I want to see numbers to say, you know what? As a county commissioner, I should be obligated to protect, protect all of our citizens. And it's like due diligence that we pay you guys. I would like to see that because I'm not going to make a decision today based on too many unknowns of everything, and then data's being thrown out, but there's, it's, it's data.
It's just information.
Yes, and I think that we do need to pay, but I also think we need to do something with the volunteers, just the same. I think it all needs to be the same regardless.
Well, I don't think you could compare the run volume that we have to a volunteer department. With anywhere from 600 to 1,000 calls outside the municipality of Portales a year, I don't think any of these gentlemen want to try to absorb that with their volunteer agents.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, what's, that's for you. You're a paid thing. These are volunteers that are going out there, and I know that they don't have the funding source that, that you guys have. So they're having to struggle just the same.
They need to work with their municipalities and y'all to find their agreements as well, but I don't have any say in their fight.
Right.
Well, I live in town, guys, and I know how busy you guys are, every single day, 24/7. So no, that's not comparing apples to apples, but I would also like the record to reflect that I support you guys, which y'all do. But I would also like the record to reflect that I support you guys, which y'all do.
Mm-hmm.
Wholeheartedly, so there's got to be a happy median, but I think it's got to be two separate issues that we deal with. We need to deal with the municipality, city of Portales, fire chief and his staff. And then on separate note, we need to deal with, with the volunteers and see how we can benefit them more as well. Uh, but it's, I think it's got to be two separate issues. But all of us can still participate, partake in everything that we are right now.
Yeah.
So that would be my recommendation. And I'm not speaking for the board, just for the record. I'm speaking for myself.
I, I totally agree with that. And you know, Tina and I had discussed, um, during one, one of our negotiations that we, we used to do a lot of stuff for in-kind, you know?
Mm-hmm.
You do this, we do this, you know, there was a lot of back and forth sharing. And I think that, you know, we do need, you know, your department needs money for detention. We need money for firing EMS. But we need to keep our citizens first. And, you know, maybe look at going back to some of that in-kind stuff, even though we both need funding.
Right, and I think we talked about that one time. We talked about even doing a wash. I mean, just in-kind for in-kind, because it's going to change depending on what it is. But that's not going to show the bottom line for you. Um, and it's not going to show the bottom line for us at detention.
Because y'all do so much with the medical portion of.
We do.
Detention.
And I mean, we could give, you know, how much that costs us and, and we have to take care of that. But we're going to have to find a way to help each other with all of it. Because I don't think the city of Portales or the county of Roosevelt, either one, can handle the brunt of all of this. I think we're going to have to find a way to work together to make it work.
Well, TJ has one last slide there.
Well, no, that, it's covered, yeah. I would like, I'd like the one, there's the one that Veronica is going to speak about. Um, I will make this available. If any of y'all want to come by the station and visit with me or get my cell phone number from Tina, I'll be glad to do my best to answer questions with the information that we can provide.
You're not done yet, TJ.
Okay.
I've got a couple more questions as well, Commissioner.
Have you pres, made this presentation to the city council?
I have not made this specific presentation to the city council. I have made it to Chad and Veronica, because I went to the city council with a presentation that had a lot of the same information, but it wasn't identical, uh, to get their approval to come and present. So that we can hopefully find an agreement and hopefully we're the ones that are chosen to provide the services.
Have you been to the, you made a comment to me and Tina one time when we was in a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
About the thirty thousand five hundred that the county's been sending you?
Thirty thousand three hundred.
Or three, I thought it was thirty thousand five hundred. Uh, but anyway, the two hundred dollars don't matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh. You made a, you made a comment to me and Tina that you never see any of that money. And I was just wondering, have you been to the city councilman and presented your case to him and say, hey?
Well, and that's a fight between me and my fiscal agent. Um, if you'll go back to the funding slide, um, that's why I said our city-funded budget is supported by. Because all of our EMS billing revenue, uh, previous one? Yeah. Next one, sorry. Yeah, our, our s, city-funded budget is supported by our EMS billing revenue, our county reimbursement for services, as well as the wildland reimbursement on grass fires supports our city budget. As I said before, we cost way more than we will ever make. But we're not intended to be a business and make money. So yes, that money does go into the general fund to have, help offset what we cost the city.
So that, well, so that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Criswell.
Well, uh, that, you know, with that being said, I think the city ought to trickle down, you know, a little bit more to you, to cover some. I know thirty thousand is just a drop in a bucket. I don't, you can't buy nothing for thirty thousand dollars. But anyway, and then my next deal, and Amber, you can answer this. Isn't there a tax? A percentage of a tax for the firing EMS, for the county, or for the fire EMS? You know, the county-wide tax, GRT tax, whatever, for firing EMS?
There is an option that can be implemented.
Okay, I thought.
Amber, it's on the last slide.
I. I thought that, that there was one, like point. We were.
I didn't know this was a.
One-fourth percent.
No, it, it's just, I put it on there because Veronica was going to speak on it. Um, it is an option. We've looked at it as the municipality of Portales, but we do not have that taxing power as a municipality. So we just wanted to give you this information so you could do with it as your pleasure.
And that would not only help, you know, what you would help for city of Portales, but it'll also help your volunteer firefighters too.
Yep.
It would be, uh, it would be a ballot. So the question would have to be placed on the ballot and it would go to the voters for their consideration. Uh, but it would be an option. And their statute reflects one-fourth. There was a lot of work done, um, on the D earmarking on that. So I would need to talk to our local government liaison at New Mexico Tax and Rev to get all of the most current language on the options. Uh, there are some counties that have, uh, these such options, uh, imposed.
Yeah, San Juan County, Tahu.
Okay, on our bus, adjusted budget, we just got through, going through down here at twenty-two thousand two hundred, there is a county fire grocery seats. What is that?
So, uh, the twenty, the two-twenty-two fund is actually the, the county fire fund. So they have three funds.
That'd be for Millen Sand and Arch.
And Arch, and they all have three funds.
That's from the state fire marshal's office, correct?
Budget, no, it's not.
It's not, okay.
Um, so from our budget workshops, they have a general fire fund where they do certain things. The federal money that we got for Arch comes through there, some of those type things. Then they have the state fire fund, which is in a separate fund. Uh, Arch and Millen Sand are together combined. And then they have the EMS fund. So there are three funds that you have to, to separate all three of those monies so that they're not commingled.
Okay, so that, that grocery seats has nothing to do with the tax, okay?
No, it's just the general county fire for these two district, or departments.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a couple of questions. I know, I know, don't get impatient with me. I just need to know for knowledge purposes. On the local option vote, would that be countywide or just the municipality?
Countywide.
Okay, good. Um, the other thing is municipalities, I know that we have the mayor from Elida here today. Would they be, and I'm going to address you, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, mayor, but how do you guys help with the volunteer, uh, firefighters, public safety within y'all's municipality? Do y'all even have an earmarked fund for that?
Uh, we do all of their, uh, grant administration. We do their, uh, their paperwork for their billing. We send it to third-party billing. We do, uh, uh, we offer stipends for, for run, but, uh, I wanted, the reason I stood up is that the, uh, there has been a, uh, GRT for emergency, for emergency services in Roosevelt County in the past. I'm not sure, uh, seventies, early eighties, maybe, you know, stuff?
I don't know.
I read, I guess, we're looking for earmarking stuff there, Elida one time, but it's not something that, uh, is new, it's something that has been, been active in Roosevelt County in the past.
Oh, thanks for that info, because if we do have a forum, all that information is going to be helpful. The other thing that I had was, um, we talked about general funding, what we're, uh, contributing, uh, right now to the city of Portales. Your general fund or the city's general fund?
It goes into the city to their general fund, then it's filtered through into our general.
The hundred, a hundred percent of what we're contributing?
Yes, because we cost way more.
I was going to say, because that should be earmarked, so thank you for that clarification. The other thing is, there's lots of needs within the city. I don't want to get into that, but who's lobbying for you guys right now, even for your department?
I am a member of the Fire Chiefs Board of Directors for the state of New Mexico. I'm actually the president-elect, so I participate in lobbying that way, uh, through that role. Uh, and I'm not sure, other than, uh, Mike Miller, who, that said, I believe the city has someone else on contract to help lobby.
Hmm, okay. Lastly, I won't be long. Um, I'm glad we have you here, because this has been on my mind. The substation in North Portales, what's the status on that?
Uh, it's actually.
We fought so hard for so many years to have a substation that represents my district, North Portales, and everything west, east, and south, or north. And what's going on there? Such a beautiful facility and, and.
Uh, it is, and I credit Chief Knuckles and Mike Inge and Sammy Standifer and council for all the work that they did to obtain that one point seven million dollar station. Um, Chief Knuckles did a great job of rolling over five hundred thousand dollars for the initial down payment and the city kicked in two hundred thousand. And then now the remaining million falls on us as a fire department that's paid out of our fire fund. Now, as far as staffing that station, right now, half of our operational staff is one year less experienced. It would not be safe for the personnel or the community for me to send three people that are untrained, uncertified to be over there. Can they find an address? Can they pump a truck? Do they have any EMS certification? I was asked in a tour of station two, uh, the one we were talking about, when do I want to staff it? I said tomorrow. But realistically, I have to look not just tomorrow, next week, next year. We have to do it in a way that's safe for our first responders and safe for the community.
I agree, and I, you know, I've talked to a lot of BNSF representatives over the years and, you know, the stoppage of trains has decreased, but the fact of the matter is just God forbid, anything bad happens where the trains are stopped and we have a major incident in our side of the town. And we fought so hard, I mean, I remember when I was commissioner in two thousand, we were addressing this and I just, but I'm just lost the words.
I appreciate that sentiment, but the more concerning statistic is the eight hundred times so far this year that our response capability has been overran, where we don't have enough people to respond to the number of emergencies coming in at one time. That's the greatest frequency. And honestly, the main reason that we built the new station was because we needed more people to run those calls. If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Lopez, I agree a hundred percent. North side of the track needed a, a station many, many years ago. We finally got it built up there. Uh, you know, it is what it is. But looking into the future and going back in my career, I've networked with many fire chiefs, county chiefs, EMS, both. Um, and the bottom line is, we've got maybe ten years of, as, as, uh, our fire departments are stating, but ambulance services are going to be privatized. I don't care how bad you hate it and, and how many times you say no. The challenges are already upon us and have been for fifteen years. Training, number one. You saw the number of hours required by the state. It's ridiculous, okay? Retention, keeping employees, and, and just attracting employees has become a struggle. Uh, and more than that, a huge challenge. These folks don't want to work for small apartments. Small fire departments love to death, uh, these guys will do anything for us and we'd do anything for them. But it's going to go away. The fire side of it, I, I can't say, because there's not as much friends and train. But on the EMS side, it's going to privatize. And at the end of the day, they're, you're going to go out and RFP, uh, Portales may do the same thing. Every little town, including the county, will go out for RFPs. They're going to get bids, and at that point, there will be no negotiating. I will give you this for that in-kind here. That ain't going to happen. Back to your taxpayers, Mr. Dickson. They're not going to love it, because it's going to cost a ton of money for privatized service to run Elida, Dora, Portales, Roosevelt County. And what we're talking about right here is dropping buckets, what is going to happen in the next decade. You may not be here, I may not be here, but it's going to happen. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And you are correct, Veronica, because I did look into that, um, private ambulance service. They are ridiculously high, yeah, it's very high. I know that Chavis County does the private ambulance.
Lincoln County.
Well, your first RFP will be pretty good. When they have to come back and you know you have no one else left, the second one is not going to be pretty good. And you can talk to Roswell and a lot of fire EMS teams that saw this happen and it's still happening.
Mm-hmm.
And up to the extent of five times higher than your initial RFP once contracted.
Well, and that's my biggest push, is we are the most economic and the best quality service model for our area. Because we are dual role. We don't just do EMS, we don't just do fire, we do both. So all of our personnel are dual-trained. So it allows for the overall cost, rather than going out for RFP for fire and EMS, is actually less. Because I just did a full study on comparing us to the city of Grants. Their initial agreement with the private ambulance service was about a hundred and fifty thousand, which is super cheap. Second one came in at about one point five million. Because there's no way to make money in EMS the way it used to be. It's, has to be subsidized by those that are wanting to provide that service because of insurance, because of the PRC tariff and so on. So a, again, I appreciate your time, and if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me. Email me, call me, I'd, I'm good. Come by the house, we can drink a glass of tea. I mean, the house may be a little messy with my two wild boys, but that's okay.
Well, and I just wanted to add one more thing is that, you know, uh, our citizens know our guys and our guys know our citizens, whether you're city, county, it doesn't matter. We're all neighbors, so we're all wanting to help. If we have to prior, privatize something, you know, we're not going to get that special home, home feel.
Um, I'd like to echo what this gentleman said, and what this gentleman said a little while ago is, um, and I'm going to use the example of what we've paid over the last eight years for medical services at our detention center. We're at their hands and it's privatized and it's increased tenfold, because our hands are tied. Statute states that we need to have it, we're going to have it, we're mandated to have it. But then again, our hands are tied, because we have to fess up with the money that they, that they requested their RFP. So, good point, good point.
And I would like to mention, as far as statute, um, the EMS statute says that a municipality or county may provide those services. But numerous of us are, or all of us are PRC certified. So that puts us in a different classification as far as that statute.
Well, Chair, I'd just like to say one thing, and it's to the fellow councilmen and to us board members. Y'all need us and we need y'all for the county. So we've got, you tell those, you go back to the council meeting. You tell them tonight, we need to figure out something. We need to get this done, settled somehow, some way. And I'll, like I say, my dad's retired fireman for thirty years over Lubbock. And like I said, we got to have y'all, but y'all have got to have us too. So, and we got to figure something out.
Yep.
Thank you, TJ.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.